Good evening, members of the public. Superintendent Dr. Kozak, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Alvich, members of the Monroe Township Board of Education. The Monroe Township Board of Education Organization meeting is now called to order. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted December 31st, 2015, at all schools, the Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality. This is a unique organization meeting where it begins without a board president as chair, and as board secretary, it's my role to begin the meeting until such time as we have a successful nomination process for president, and if we don't, then it would be a successful nomination process for vice president, who would chair the rest of the meeting presumably. Would you please join me in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving right along, number four on the agenda is election results. These have been sent to all the board members in your packet, and there's copies available at the front desk for the public. The election results have been confirmed and certified by the county. It is now my duty to administer the oath of office to the following individuals, who I hereby request to join me at the microphone and the table up front: Mr. Marvin Braverman, Ms. Dawn Carino, Mr. Frank Russo, and Mr. Paul Rutzke. Please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Paul Rutzke.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same
To the same.
And to the government established in the United States
And to the government established in the United States.
And this state
And this state.
Under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I
I, Paul Rutzke.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of a board of education
For the office of member of a board of education.
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially
Impartially.
And justly
And justly.
Perform all duties of that office
Perform all duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I
I, Paul Rutzke.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
And declare that I am not disqualified
And declare that I am not disqualified.
As a voter pursuant to
As a voter pursuant to
RS-19:4-1
RS-19:4-1.
And that I am not disqualified
And that I am not disqualified.
To hold this office
To hold this office.
Due to a conviction of a crime
Due to a conviction of a crime.
Or offense
Or offense.
Listed in NJSA 18A 12-1
Listed in NJSA 18A 12-1.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause). Yes, sir. It's been reviewed by the attorney and New Jersey School Boards. Thank you very much. Please, you're now welcome to join the Board of Education at the board table.
Who is that? Me? Okay. Hi. You know Steve.
It is my duty now to proceed with a roll call. Ms. Arminio.
Here.
Mr. Braverman.
Here.
Ms. DeMayo.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mrs. Kolpanowicz.
Here.
Mr. Nostine.
Here.
Ms. Carino.
Here.
Mr. Ryback.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
Mr. Rutzke.
Here.
Let it be known that we have a quorum present this evening. Next, we'll move up to number seven on the agenda: election of a board president. I will open the nomination process at this time. Is there a nomination for anyone to make for an individual for board president? Mr. Nostine.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mr. Stephen Ryback for board president.
Seconded by Ms. Arminio. Are there any other nominations for board president at this time? Seeing none, I close the nomination process for president, and I will take a roll call for Mr. Steve Ryback to be board president of the Monroe Township Board of Education. A yes vote will be for Mr. Ryback to be president of the Board of Education. Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanowicz. Mr. Nostine.
Yes.
Ms. Carino.
Yes.
Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Russo. It is now my pleasure to introduce the new Monroe Township Board of Education President, Mr. Stephen Ryback.[543.04][543.04](applause). Mr. Ryback, will you please join me to my right, where you will resume the chair of the meeting?
Thank you, Michael. Before we continue, I'd just like to take a minute and just say thank you to everyone. I'm honored at this position. I'm honored to also work with this board, who has worked so well together this past year. It's really a pleasure working with you, and I look forward to great things to come, and certainly the biggest honor is working for the students and school community of Monroe. I'd like to thank Anthony and Doug. Also, Doug, you're going to be a hard act to follow, but we'll give it a good try. Let's get back to the agenda. Now I'd like to open for nominations for vice president. Do we have any nominations for vice president? Ms. Arminio.
Yes, I nominate Tom Nostine.
Tom Nostine. Is there a second?
One second.
Okay. Any other nominations for vice president? Mr. Gorski, I guess we could take a roll call.
Okay, that closes. That closes the nomination process for vice president. Yea would be a favorable vote for Mr. Tom Nostine as vice president of the Monroe Township Board of Education. Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo.
No.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanowicz.
No.
Mr. Nostine.
Yes.
Ms. Carino.
Yes.
Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Rutzke. Thank you, sir. Mr. Ryback, it is my pleasure to introduce the vice president of the Monroe Township Board of Education, Mr. Tom Nostine.
Congratulations, Tom. It's a pleasure working with you.[684.04][684.04](applause). Okay, moving on to item number 15, other board business. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gorski for a minute. We have, I know we have one notice from the mayor, and then we have the preference sheets, which I think, have they been given out yet? They'll be given out. Well, I just want to make fast mention that on Monday at 7:00 in the middle school, we have the Student Advisory Committee, and we're looking forward, that's the first meeting for that particular large group of about 100 residents and the board members. So we're well on our way in dealing with the issues of the numbers of students that are coming into our school in the future. Michael.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Tegley-Farrow is pancing around the committee preference sheets. Please specify the committees that you would like to participate on, and if possible, if you could please return them to me by the close of Friday, that would be appreciated. As Mr. Ryback has indicated, Mayor Tamboro has scheduled a meeting with the leadership of the Monroe Township Board of Education, who include board president, Mr. Ryback, Superintendent Dr. Kozak, and myself, to be joined by our representative Senator Linda Greenstein, Assemblyman Wayne D'Angelo, and Assemblyman Daniel Benson, to discuss the biggest issue facing the township, which is the very limited amount of state aid that we receive. The state aid, by its underfunding, has put an unfair financial burden on the township residents, and we will work collaboratively to push our district design legislation, S-272, and the assembly version, A-1500, and discuss any and all other possible remedies to rectify this inequity. Mr. Ryback?
Thank you. Is there any other board of education business at this point? Mr. Mayall?
Yes. As we all know, since 2010, Monroe Township School District has been underfunded by the state, which refuses to fully fund the School Funding Reform Act of 2008. Monroe has seen over $10 million lost due to the state's refusal to properly fund the school districts of the state. Despite the efforts of the state to hurt school districts, Monroe has been able to maintain equality education, but I oppose efforts to further erode our ability to do so. There is a charter school in East Brunswick that draws students from our district. The state mandates that when a student attends a charter school, it is the sending district that must cover the cost for these students to attend that school. In Monroe's case, there are eight students attending Hatikva Charter School in East Brunswick, costing the district and taxpayers over $90,000 per year of our operating budget. This is the cost of approximately two teachers, which we need in order to accommodate the growing student population in our district and keep our class sizes at a reasonable level. In addition, there are four more students on the waiting list, which would mean another $45,000 out of our operating budget. The school has just received approval from the New Jersey DOE to expand from elementary school grades into middle school grades, and they want to expand by adding more classrooms at the lower grades. These expansions will open the door for more students to attend Hatikva, further draining money from the district's operating budget. Again, this is mandated by the State of New Jersey Department of Education. Therefore, I move that we direct the board attorney to prepare a resolution for us to consider at the next board meeting, opposing the expansion of the Hatikva Charter School into the middle school grades and further expansions, as it would harm Monroe's budget and our taxpayers.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Tom?
Yeah, I just have some questions with regards to the numbers. Could you repeat, it was eight students at 95,000?
They're at about 90,000. We're paying a little over 10,000 a student.
Now, is that above and beyond the $15,000 that we currently pay per student estimate in the district?
No, that is
On top of the 15, so it's 15 plus 11?
No, it's just the 11.
That's a deal, that's a bargain.
Do we pay for
It's not really a bargain.
We're paying 15, we're calculating cost per student, correct?
Basically, what the transaction is doing is taking the state aid per pupil allotment for those children and sending it directly to Hatikva. And Hatikva is responsible for the transportation costs, which are not then included in the tuition costs, so it is a burden on local school districts. East Brunswick Board of Education, I know from speaking to the business administrator, has complained for years how that district spends over $1.5 million out of their operating budget directly to Hatikva Charter School for the children who decide to go attend that alternative education setting.
I guess my question, maybe I should rephrase it, is what is the actual cost of the district? Because obviously, if we're losing eight students, there's some savings there to the district, because we're currently spending roughly 15K per student, correct?
The 15's an average. It's costing exactly $10,000 a student, which we have to pay to Hatikva for tuition.
So again, I guess my question is, is this costing us, how much is this costing us? Above and beyond what it would cost if they were educated in our district?
Sure.
You're right, in a way. Financially, if you look at it in strict terms in that regard, it would be a savings. But when you look at the way education is funded, the cost per pupil that we receive in state aid, which we know we receive a very little amount in state aid, is based on the assumption that you have so many kids in a classroom, and that each, the funding for each individual student really covers, when you compile that funding, that accounts for the cost that we have to expend on any given student. If you're removing individual students from different parts of the program, each one of those students representing $10,000, it's that cost, that $90,000, it doesn't go into the operating budget, which would really come out to, it's not just $10,000 per student. You know, we only receive so much state aid, it costs a lot more, so that money contributes into our general operating budget. To assume those 10 students isn't really going to cost us $90,000. We're not going to have to add a new teacher to have the 10 students back here, we won't have to add anything else, not even transportation. There's probably room for 10 more students out of all of our buses, I'm sure they're not all coming from the same location. So this argument with charter schools is a common argument throughout New Jersey in districts, especially in districts where they're high-performing districts, and where you have a quality education that's being offered, the argument goes back to, is there a need for a charter school? I'm not talking about this specific charter school. I can't really speak to this specific charter school. Maybe a wonderful school, but we also have a wonderful education program. So anytime somebody decides to leave, they decide to go to a private school, the parents pay tuition. If they decide to leave and they go to a charter school, now that little bit of state funding that we do receive is now diverted out to whatever the charter school would be. So just in general terms, that's been the argument from public school educators for any of the charter schools throughout the state.
I guess what I just have a problem with is, when we do the budget philosophy meeting, I hear that we're getting 100 new students in, and then they say that's going to cost us $150,000. And now it seems like we're doing the opposite. We're saying we're losing nine students, and now all of a sudden, that $15,000 per isn't applicable. And I just feel that we just can't have it both ways. It's either costing us this amount per student, or it's not. And I guess that's where I'm trying to get the answer here. I'm still confused.
Right. And I don't really want to engage in an argument with that, it's not my intent. If you add students, if you have so many kids in a class, and you're adding students to that, that
I get it, and that's
Right, that could result in hiring new teachers, new things like that.
Exactly, and that's kind of, but I'm just kind of using this, because this is what we seem to get at the philosophy meeting, and nobody makes the point that you're making at that point. Okay? And I think it's a valid point, but I just, I just get confused when, when it's this amount of students, it's costing us money, it's only 10,000 a student, but when it's this, when it's new people, it's much more. And that's my, my only concern here. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Jill.
Yeah, I'd like to understand the aspect, the financial aspect of it also, but also the philosophy. I too, and maybe I'm under a misconception, that charter schools are for, or were established initially philosophically for, because under, the district school was underperforming. So I, personally, I'd like to just have a little bit more information on the philosophy, why it would be necessary to send anyone out of district in a high-performing school district, which I know we have. So that, that would be something, not, not an argument, I don't, and I don't think, you know, Mr. Nostine was arguing anything, I think we're just seeking some information. And that would be one of the kinds of discussions I'd like to have, because I too think that having a high-performing district, it seems like charter schools sort of are surrogate or something almost for private schools, and that might, that's my personal opinion, not a board opinion. So I'd like to understand that a little bit better going forward. If there's a way where we can have, if a resolution comes forward, if we can have a broader discussion and maybe get some, you know, educators to sort of explain the difference briefly, or if you want to do that now.
Well, just to, just to, maybe to hopefully provide some clarification. If we send a student out to a school, it's usually because we can't meet the needs of that individual student. In this case, the students or their parents or ender, ender parents have decided that they want to place their child in that school voluntarily, they withdraw the student. If a parent decides they want to send their child to a private school, or they want to have homeschooling, that's their choice, that's the prerogative. If they're sending their, they're withdrawing their child to send them to a charter school, the, maybe the implicit argument is that that charter school offers something that we don't, and that's okay, except that in this case, as opposed to the private school and the homeschooling, there's no funding that follows a student with, in those cases. In this case, the funding follows a student. So that's, again, it's the parent's decision to, to remove their child, we're not sending the child to that school. Does that help? I don't know if I answered the question.
Yeah, again, it's, I guess I need to do some research on the philosophy behind the purpose of charter school. I know there's a big wide range, and it's a big political
I kind of have an answer for that.
Sort of keg.
The charter law was written in 1996, and the, the initial, it was written to allow these schools to step outside the educational box and educate students in a different way. And the thought process was that these students would be pockets of innovation, and they would share their innovation with other public schools. And that has never transpired over the course of the last 20 years. I mean, there have been, you know, some schools that have popped up, but now, during the current, you know, last five years, they have been, the new thought is that charter schools will allow children in failing schools to get out of failing schools and into a charter school where it's supposed to be better. But the jury's out on whether they are actually perform better or not. Some do, some don't. On average, most of them perform at the same level of their local school or worse, regardless of if it's a high-performance school or a low-performance school.
President Ryback? Just, just a follow-up. So this could lead to people seeking out different kinds of school systems and calling them, or really would have to be, it'd have to be a qualified charter, a certified charter in order for somebody to do that.
They have to be approved, correct.
Right. So unless they are, then we're not at risk of having people just sort of send their kids to all different kinds of, of schools and us pay for it, right?
Yes.
At this point? I'd like to just get more information about the
Mr. Russo.
Thank you.
Just a basic question. How are the charter schools able to do it at such a low cost?
I'd like to answer that.
I think you have the ask permission.[1554.12][1554.12](laugh).
Go ahead, Jill.
They get donations and they have funders. The Hatikva Charter School has a billionaire funder who's helping them.
Some also get funding from private industry, too.
But we get taxpayer-funded, so
What do you mean, sir?
Taxpayers fund the school here.
Well, you asked why, they can do it cheaper. They get extra money from philanthropy.
And we cannot.
They have, they, if you go on their charter website, it talks about, you know, their funders and who's funding them, I mean
But it, it's still costing $10,000, you said.
I know, but there's, the economies of scale that say, you know, at some point, you can take one kid out of a classroom, and you're giving that $10,000 away, but you're not saving any money because you can't fire a teacher, there's not, you're not eliminating a whole classroom.
You know, I was thinking, why don't we just do a roll call? This is just a draft.
Mr. Board President, I believe Ms. DeMayo's motion was to direct the attorney to draft the resolution, where further deliberation on this topic will certainly be provided at the next meeting, along with the reso.
Okay, you want to do a roll call?
Yes, sir. Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Braverman.
No.
Ms. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanowicz.
Yes.
Mr. Nostine.
No.
Ms. Carino.
No.
Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Russo. Board President, motion passes, and I will notify the board attorney to draft a resolution in accordance with Ms. DeMayo's wishes, and further deliberation is expected with the presentation of that resolution.
Thank you. I have to apologize, I did skip a few items. We, I would like to go to number nine. Mr. Gorski.
Thank you, sir. Number nine is the Code of Ethics. The Code of Ethics was passed out along with the statutes governing this section to all the board members prior to the meeting. I have some back that are signed already, thank you very much. So I'd like to recommend that the members of the Board of Education acknowledge receipt and acceptance of the New Jersey School Board Association's Code of Ethics.
So moved.
Then we'll take a roll call. Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanowicz.
Yes.
Mr. Nostine.
Yes.
Ms. Carino.
Yes.
Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Russo.
Yes.
And Mr. Rutzke.
And this one, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Item number 10, suspension of the policy bylaw. It's recommended that the Board of Education suspend the operation of policy bylaw number 0164, to permit the board to conduct only one public forum at this evening's public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Staying. I guess there's no recusals, I don't see any. Okay, that being the case, I'd like to invite members of the public up to the microphone to address the board. Let me just remind you, you have three minutes. Please state your name, your address, and speak directly Please state your name, your address, and speak directly to me, not any Board member in particular. They will not be answering or responding to you, only I will. Any members of the public? Yes.
Good evening, my name's Harold Kane, I live on Newport Way in Rossmore. Mr. Ryback said that in the next, I guess, few days, you'll be having a meeting with the legislators from the 14th District, Senator Greenstein, and Assemblyman Benson, and D'Angelo. I would bring up a topic they probably don't want to hear, but unfortunately affects everyone in Monroe on the school funding issue. The residents of Monroe, including everyone in this room, pays a substantial amount of money in taxes to Trenton through income tax, sales tax, gasoline tax, excise tax, and everything under the sun. And basically, we get nothing back for it. But when you wind up doing some research, you'll find out that other people pay very little taxes and get a tremendous amount back. One of the, some of the research we did on property values were, the new Hovnanian Building in Jersey City, 55 Hudson Street, a $1.8 million waterfront condo with views of Lower Manhattan pays $300 in property taxes for the owner. And that's because of pilot agreements in Jersey City. You have condos and long branch that are approaching $2 million on the waterfront. They had a huge fight with the residents there on eminent domain several years ago, because they're all small, single-family bungalows for summer renters. The developers wanted the land, they finally got it through eminent domain, and this was the end result. You have somebody like Eli Manning, who lives in a high-rise condo in Hoboken, pays about $4,000 a year for the taxes on his condo. A substantial number of the residents of Monroe, probably majority pay more than that. And yet, he has all the, whatever Hoboken offers, the city, and one of his neighbors was former Governor Corzine, so that's the quality of the place he was in. What this comes down to, and here's why they don't want to hear it, is the property tax issue with the Abbott municipalities. The three I just mentioned should no longer be Abbott municipalities, because they suck all the tax dollars out of Monroe, and they get it all because we subsidize the government down there, the schools and, and the municipalities. They need to lose their Abbott status and make it on a pay-as-you-go basis. One thing I researched a few years ago, looking, comparing Monroe to Long Branch, we were a group four school, school district, they're a group three, which means they have substantially fewer students, probably a neighborhood of 1,000 when you see it. Yet, they actually had more employees than we had. Well, yeah, if the state's feeding money into them like there's no tomorrow, of course they're going to have more employees, and nobody's going to say anything about it. Well, maybe it's time that you said something to them about this, and using those three municipalities as examples. If they're not drawing tax money out of Monroe taxpayers, there's money down in Trenton that can help us out. Basically, we're getting our money back, is all we're doing. If any of you want more information, I'd be happy to email it to you, something you can take to a meeting, and instead of just speculating on it, you actually have documents to back yourself up. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else from the public? That being the case, I'll close this session of the public report, and I want to move to the organizational items, number 12. Mr. Gorski?
Thank you, sir. Number 12 is the organizational items, defining the meeting dates, the policies, the designation of banks or depositories, and the newspapers for legal advertisements. I would like to recommend that the members of the Board of Education accept and approve item 12, Organization Items Letters A through D, and be approved by consent. Roll call.
All moved?
Second by Mr. Ryback. Any discussion? I will then take a roll call. Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolponowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nosteen?
Yes.
Ms. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, motion passes.
Thank you. Now have our student Board members, you have a report. Mr. Thorny?
Ms. DeMayo, I'm sorry. That's okay. So, the first thing is, the high school's going to be holding its first Relay for Life event on June 11th. The program is an overnight walk to raise money for the American Cancer Society. I volunteered at a Relay for Life event last year in Mercer County, and it was a really nice experience, and I'm really happy that our high school is doing one this year. In December, the high school also hosted the annual VEX robotics competition. This competition allows students to build and program robots to compete in annual tasks. The Falcon robot team had to go through the first few rounds with a few malfunctions, but after a while, they did fix their issues, and they won the judges' award for overcoming their troubles. And for one quick sports update, the girls' basketball team beat Allentown in the Monroe Holiday Classic game with a score of 59 to 42.
Thank you. The high school's drama club recently held a cabaret night back in December, also before the school was dismissed for winter break. The show choir and the choir clubs and groups held a concert for both students, faculty, and a concert for members of the community as well. Additionally, FBLA and DECA are continuing with regionals, actually, FBLA finished. We have a significant amount of students who competed in business, marketing, finance-related events, and who are now moving on to the state level in FBLA. And students in DECA will be continuing with the second part of the regional testing, specifically with the performance-based assessments tomorrow at King University. And finally, the MTH's chapter of the Mali United Nations will be attending their conference this weekend, Friday through Sunday, where they, where they will have the opportunity to meet with over 1,800 students from across four different states in order to engage in simulations of the United Nations through general, general assemblies and committees. Mr. Board President, that concludes our report.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Okay, I guess the next scheduled Board meeting is January 13th, it's Wednesday at 7:00 here at the high school. I'd like to just remind, yes?
Other Board of Education business to respond to that?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, are there any other Board members? Yes, Michelle, I apologize.
Okay, I would just like to welcome the new Board members. I remember, two years ago, I mentioned that everyone brings something new to the table, so I, I recognize that, and I am very grateful for the new Board members and our old veteran Board member, Mr. Braverman, and he is constantly bringing things to the table, for all of us to, to discuss and deliberate for the benefit of our community. So, welcome, and looking forward to working with everyone this year. Thank you.
Tom?
I'd like to echo Ms. Arminio's comments, but I'd also like to welcome our new representative from Jamesburg, and hopefully, we can keep the good rapport we have going with, with Jamesburg, and we appreciate your, your representation.
Happy to be here.
Anyone else? Okay, in that case, just a fast reminder to please, your preference sheets due into Mr. Gorski's office by Friday, close of business on Friday. And the next Board meeting will be Wednesday, January 13th, at, at the high school right here. I'll make a motion that this meeting is adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I don't think anyone would be opposed, thank you.
Yes, yeah, just...
Meeting is adjourned.
No, this, this, oh, that's...